I really don't.
We have, uh, we've got to the magic hour of six o'clock on February the 4th, which is a regular city council meeting. We welcome you all. Glad you came. And, uh, everybody got their mics turned on? We would not want, we will turn Mr. O'Rourke's off. Okay. Um, would you call O'Rourke, please?
Councilmember Cochran, here. Councilmember Gonzalez, here. Councilmember Hammack,
here.
Councilmember Hockes?
Here.
Councilmember Meisner?
Here.
Councilmember Turner?
Here.
Mayor Protem Smith?
Here.
Mayor Troutman?
Here. Thank you. Let's please rise and do the pose of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Are we adjourned?
I knew it was gonna be that way. Um, we have a few people that did sign up to talk to council. And the way we do that is if, if there is a subject on our agenda and it's part of that subject, we'll wait till we get there. Um, I don't see any.
We also have one person who has to do the other contract.
Okay. And so in the first few minutes of it, we'd like to have, uh, if you'd like to just come up to microphone and tell us who you are and address council, go right ahead. You have time to do it now. But if you did sign and, did you sign one of these?
Yes.
Okay. I'll call you up then when we're ready for that. All right. Um, should we do that now?
Yeah, the gentleman with the mustache, he has a public, just a.
Well, there are several people with mustaches. Well, let's just jump into the, let's just jump into the ones that wrote, we have three of them, three people that would like to talk to council that have given us a notice. So could we have Martin Welch come up and, uh, address council regarding Red Canyon Park Road?
Uh, Martin Welch, 374 Humboldt Drive, Canyon City. Greetings, esteemed mayor, honorable council, and the often unsung, hardworking city staff. My wife and I have had the privilege of living and thriving in this amazing area for the past 25 years, but really only in the past few years have we begun to feel truly at home. We often hear of couples or relationships growing apart. I feel in terms of my relationship with Canyon City, we have grown together. My wife and I have committed to more fully invest in this community and we have purchased land on Garden Park Road to develop in the coming years and make our home. This parcel lies between Garden Park Road and the entrance to Red Canyon Park, so essentially we now find ourselves neighbors with the city in this amazing park. The road through our property is the result of a deed recorded in 1951 and was allowed on the condition there would be two maintained cattle guards on both ends. Uh, the cattle guards are in disrepair as we talked to Ashley. The road has been in disrepair as well. And we also, uh, in light of that, it's my understanding that access could be revoked if these deeded conditions are not met. We've also had an ongoing issue with trespassing. Um, the bright spot, I've discussed these issues with Mr. Rex Brady, the Parks Director. He has been extremely helpful and sympathetic. He's been a pleasure to work with. He's had signage installed notifying visitors on the road sign that is a, there's private property on both sides of the road up into the entrance of the park. And he's also, uh, put out bids. I understand that there is in the budget to work on the road this season and, uh, repair those cattle guards. I'm extremely pleased with that. Mr. Rex Brady is a real asset. He's been extremely polite, professional, and again, a pleasure to work with. And I hope that you guys continue to support his efforts, um, and value him as he deserves. Um, for many, for many years, Red Canyon Park has been neglected in favor of other projects. The city has wisely invested in many new projects, all of which I wholeheartedly support. There should also come a time soon when we invest in Red Canyon Park as the sublime treasure that it is, one of our true natural wonders. Right now, we treat this park much like hiding cash under a mattress. It has untold potential and is also in need of good stewardship to ensure its preservation. Uh, the nearby trail systems and climbing areas are nationally known with thousands of outdoor enthusiasts visiting every year, a trend that is only going to grow. I would like you to envision Red Canyon Park as a legitimate tourist attraction with a paved road, well-maintained, family-friendly trails, maybe a modern visitor center with information, maps, gifts, gifts, perhaps even a coffee bar, guided tours, and the like. It's hard to imagine now, right? But, you know, Garden of the Gods was once nothing, and look at it now. And, uh, a time when hashtag Red Canyon Park has thousands of hits, serving as a free billboard to the beauty and outdoor opportunities Canyon City offers, advertising to the world, provided for free by awestruck visitors. Every dollar we invest in this area could have an exponential return for Canyon City. Thanks for letting me talk and thank you guys for all of, uh, all that you do. I really appreciate all that the council does, the staff does, and obviously the esteemed mayor as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Just stay, any councilperson would like to, Ms. Turner, would you like, do you have a question?
Well, I, I have to, to go off of that because we have kind of an undiscovered treasure back there on Shelf Road with the climbing.
Absolutely.
And, um, I, I've always felt that, uh, that area could definitely be developed into a tourist, not tourist, but you know, outdoor enthusiast attraction area. Um, so I think that's something that we need to maybe explore a little bit more because we do have one of, I mean Shelf Road, the climbing out there is, is unbelievable. And if we can get that on the map, that's gonna bring a lot of people our way.
And it is on the map. Um, if you go up there, I mean, again, thousands of people already visit that area and it could only grow.
Yeah.
And it can grow with the city's help in a sustainable, preserved type of way that doesn't see it getting trashed.
Right. Good. Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Anything else?
Um, I did have a question. You mentioned about the roads and the signs for your private property. What about having your needs met as far as the cattle guard crossings?
Um, Mr. Brady indicated that that would be part of that project as well. So he, you know, I mean, we're, we're extremely pleased. We just bought the property in August, so I know it's, it hasn't been that long. And, uh, so again, um, we're not, we're not in a hurry. We want to be good neighbors and, and we just want to see, you know, the best for the community as a whole. And obviously it benefit us too, but you know, um, yeah, that's, that was my understanding. We don't want people's cattle getting on our property. We don't, we don't have any plans of running any kind of agricultural operation up there, so.
All right. Well, thank you.
It is extremely unique park. Just in that spot right there, our kids enjoyed those monoliths that went up there. And then we, we went farther up, uh, to the climbing wall and there's two parking lots. Were full. There must've been 200 cars. And I've never seen so many Subarus in my life.
Absolutely.
So, thank you, Martin.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Just, mayor, just as a point of information, the timing of this is great because the pre-bid co-, uh, meeting for improvement of that road and the cattle guard is actually tomorrow morning.
Nice.
Wow. So we should know next week. Well, the bids won't be in until when, do you think?
They're typically out for three weeks, so we should be bringing bids back to you in probably latter part of March.
Okay. Okay. Great. Thank you again, Martin. Um, okay, we got Mary Chamberlain. And congratulations, Mary, for your, your outstanding award of Citizen of the Year for the Chamber of Commerce.
Thank you. Can you hear me?
It was great. Yes, we can.
Okay. Now, are these, so these little, I was watching him and those little things go. So I gotta hurry.
Yeah. You got, you got three minutes and then the trapdoor opens and well, we don't know.
That's okay. It'd be fine. Then I'd take a rest. Um, my name is Mary Chamberlain, 2403 Greenway Circle, Canyon City. And I'm here to talk to you about the SoCo Tourism Summit, which is Southern Colorado Tourism Summit. And I have this for you, but that's gonna, I'm, when can I hand that out and not have this buzzer go off?
Oh, we can give you extra time. Just run up here and run back. I, until I can, no, I'm just kidding.
I just wanna pay.
We'll come, we'll come get it.
I want to give the rules.
No, no. Rules? Who has rules?
Okay. So, um, this is the third, uh, SoCo Tourism event, and I just wanted to let you know that this is put on by 11 counties, Southern Rockies, Crossroads of Cultures, which actually brought the kiosk signs that, um, you guys are gonna discuss later today. Um, that's five counties from here down to Trinidad. And then the other six counties are from La Junta down southeast. We got together, uh, three years ago and, uh, decided to put on a tourism summit. It's been very well attended. This year, we're doing a little differently that we are taking it on the road. We're starting in La Junta, going to Walsenburg, down to Trinidad, and, and back on a luxury bus. Um, this is also sponsored by the Colorado Tourism Office. It is more than just tourism, though. It is economic development. We're going to have speakers on the buses and talking about different economic and tourist issues. So, one way that you could support us, which you guys have actually supported, we've had people from, um, the, like Mike Bandera came last year from the, the city tourism group. We've been well represented by the Fremont County Tourism Group. And so if, we would love to have someone that, you know, one of the big shots come from Canyon City or Fremont County, we would love to have that. But another way that you could support is, next year, this will be put up for bid again. And we're really hoping that Canyon or Fremont County will take the bid to have the tourism conference in Fremont County. We tried it this year and just with all the vote situation with the tourism board, it, you know, no one really wanted to pursue it. So that was, that is one way that you can support this. And it's a really terrific opportunity to network, see what other cities are doing. Um, so, look at, I made it.
What's the size of the conference? I know that was last year, but what's, what do you think?
This year, we're limiting it to 50 because we only got one luxury bus. Um, next year, you know, we just wanted to start small. Next year, we're hoping for two. So it would be, you know, 100 people. And so of course, that's the hotel rooms. Um, we've had, you know, like about 100 the last two years, but we just decided to shake it up a little bit and, and try something a little different, a little more exciting. Most tourism summits are kind of the, you know, same kind of thing. I mean, although they're very exciting, but they are, um, you know, we just wanted to really explore the, the region and really show people what, what we have. We do get people from Denver, Fort Collins, Durango.
What's the lead time then if we were to, or the tourist council, I guess, would be the lead organization to put a bid in for the conference next year, 2020?
Right. Uh, we will, so this one is happening, we decided to do it earlier this year because we had done it the last two years in May, which is a horrible time because most tourist places are back in business. So we decided to do it in April. I would say probably by June, we'll have the, um, RFPs ready and probably August because we want to have a lot, a lot of planning time. So we, there's plenty of time.
Okay.
And I would really vote for you guys, for us to have it.
Any questions of council?
Um, I do have a question. It's on a little bit of a different subject matter, but thank you for this. This is very interesting and I'll, I'll look into it. But under your sphere of influence with the Colorado Tourism Office, would you have an ability to help us with getting contact, with getting, um, some support for our Small Business Revolution, for getting online votes to get number one place?
Oh, good idea. Good idea. Um, I, you know, I could certainly, there, there are contacts in CTO that write up art, that you send articles to and they put them out. That is really a good idea. Um, I can get that to you. Would you like me to send that to you?
I would love to have that information and some contact information that I can use to call.
Great.
And get some support because we have to branch out from Canyon City and Fremont County. We have to have the entire state of Colorado support us.
Right. That's, uh, that's a great idea. Great idea, Ashley. So I will, I'll make a note to do that.
Yeah. If you could email me, that'd be perfect.
Yep. Okay.
Thank you.
Do I have, how do I get your email?
It's Ashley.
Is that with EY?
Well, I know, I'm just gonna give you my business card.
Oh, good. We won't, that's not taking up the time. Okay. And.
I think it should be on the website too, but, uh.
And, you know, check out the website that we have. It's constantly being changed, you know. It's just, it's very exciting. Thank you, Ashley. Okay, anything else? And I will get that.
Thank you, Mary.
All right.
Appreciate that.
Thank you. Now I'm off to Florence to do the same thing.
You sure? You didn't feel that trapdoor moving, did you? Um, April Jackson, come on down. School zone safety is your topic.
Good evening, council. My name is April Jackson. I live at 1516 Elm Avenue. I have my two young children with me. My oldest is 11 years old at Canyon City Middle School. She's also my child with Down Syndrome. My son is a fourth grader at Lincoln Sci- School of Science and Technology. We currently do take our kids to and from school, uh, me and my husband Eric Jackson. And we have noticed that people are speeding through the school zones at Canyon Middle School and Lincoln. And with my daughter having a disability, I am afraid, she is a runner and I'm so afraid she will take off and people are not paying attention. I've seen so many close calls with kids in the crosswalks and people not paying attention and there is no police force out. I have always, since I started driving at the age of 16, always respected the school zones because I, being a student myself at the time, would not like to see any of my friends hurt, or I would not like to see any other children hurt. I have nothing but respect for the city of Canyon City as I, when I moved here back in 2008 and have loved it here ever since. The community is great and I just want to see the community continue to flourish and not have to worry about our students going to and from school. And that's all I got for right now.
Okay. Is there, go ahead, McFray, please.
Is there a specific timeframe? Is, are we talking about like the first thing in the morning when they're going to school or when they're getting out of school? Or is it the same both ways?
Same both ways.
Okay.
And the lights are on. Uh, right now, I think Lincoln is getting some stuff done. So their lights aren't currently working at any of their sections. But Canyon Middle School and all that, I see the lights flashing, people, we obey it, but I see other people like today, we saw someone just almost at 35, 40, going straight through the school zone. And it's too quick to try to get a license plate, trying to watch for the kids and everything else.
Okay. And I agree with you. Maybe we, uh, our administrator can get with the chief of police and, and I'd like to see some of that because I haven't seen anybody on 9th Street by Washington School at all, you know, and they used to be there and they used to even sometimes have the little sign that reminds people their speed. So I think we need to concentrate now back on those zones that we, in my opinion, we're kind of ignoring. And thank you for your information.
You're very welcome.
Ms. Gonzalez?
Um, this is kind of near and dear to my heart because I was a crossing guard for a couple of years at CCMS and that position is no longer available. Uh, where is it that you drop your daughter off at?
Uh, tour, in between the end of the building and the administration building where the special needs classes are.
Okay. And there, there are no crossing guards there anymore. They, they have one behind CCMS now.
Yes, ma'am.
But they don't have one in the, in the front. And I know that, um, even as a crossing guard, people would just whiz right past me. Um, so we need to get some enforcement or, or something out there that can, can stop people from flying by.
Yeah. I, we noticed it a lot on 4th Street because we'll park across, you know, away from the school with limited parking at Lincoln. And I will, I used to work for Argus Event Staffing in Denver. I used to do a lot of parking and stuff for CU Boulder and places. So I don't have a fear of standing and I try to help and make sure a lot of the kids that are coming our direction, I make sure they get across safe, or my husband will stand there. Because one, I don't want to see my own kid get hurt. And two, I would not want to see any other kids get hurt because they're friends of my children. They know both my kids. And that would just break their hearts. And I don't want them to have to see that.
It's always been an issue right there at that intersection on, at CCMS.
Ms. Meisner?
Is Lincoln in the city limits?
Yes.
Yeah, it's getting a safe, safe to school routes grant this summer. So both Lincoln and CCMS are gonna see some enhanced, um, crossings. So CCMS is gonna have some bump outs. I mean, pending the federal government going back into operation so we can process the grant monies. But, um, so CCMS will have some safer crossing on Main Street and also Lincoln will have sites, some sidewalks and improved roads and improved parking as well. But irregardless, we still need to have some police out there to enforce.
Yeah, I'll talk to the chief. We'll get some special enforcement and also put up the digital signs to just reinforce the lower limits in those areas. So we'll follow up.
Yeah, Lincoln School does not even have sidewalks. The kids walk in the street to get to school. It's awful.
Okay. Thank you.
No, it's off of 4th. It's in, it's in between 4th and 9th and Myrtle. So it's on Myrtle.
Yeah.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Thanks for bringing that to our attention. Anyone else in the audience would like to, talk going once? Okay. Let me, everybody's talked. All right. Any council member announcements? What a, what a great week we had last week, huh? Lost my voice, found my hat and a rabbit in it. It was just wonderful. What an exciting crowd. I have never, I was up there in front, of course, with Amanda, and when that cheering was going on, I never felt anything like that. It just was electric. And she looked at me and said, wow. I think we really wowed and I really did. So proud. It was a, it gets me. It was just so exciting. And what a week. Um, we should be proud of ourselves. So, not, not just council, I mean, everybody.
Everybody.
I think it's really important.
What a great time.
Yeah, important to say a thank you to Ryan Stevens, the Chamber of Commerce, the Downtown Alliance, all of the businesses that have been working so hard to promote Canyon City and the hashtag by Canyon City, and all of the citizens that came to the rally. It was just really empowering and exciting to see Canyon City come together in unity and for a great cause. And that they, you could see that, that, like you said, that vibe in the air that we believe in ourselves and we are worth being chosen.
It was truly amazing. Uh, with all the restaurants that kicked in, what great food we had. And then we had Ombrialed up on top of the, uh, the annex in that gorgeous, uh, setting up there. And there were five or 600 people came by during that time. Uh, so, uh, we're really, really doing some great things and we appreciate that. Are there any, while I'm talking, there's, this week is gonna be very busy because we have Carolyn Wednesday morning, 8:30, right? Uh, I have the, the county mayor's meeting. There are six of us. Uh, county mayor's meeting, which is Wednesday, 2:30. And then, uh, general government is Wednesday at 4:00. And that's gonna, one of them is gonna be, uh, go ahead.
Opioid and homelessness in addition to talking to Ty about his development.
Okay. And then at 3:30 Thursday, I believe, that's Stormwater. That'll be the first meeting for the Storm, combined Stormwater Committee, those people that we picked. And then the long-awaited and always sought-after Coffee with the Mayor on the 8th in this building at 8:00.
Oh, I didn't know that.
And, yeah, it'll be.
So when is that?
At 8:00. You're all welcome. Maybe we have to publicize that. 8:00 here at this building, Coffee with the Mayor.
Which day?
That's a Friday. That's Friday.
This Friday.
That's this coming Friday.
Morning.
Yes. One day. And there is rumors that my wife might have cookies there. It's rumor.
Oh, that is a good bribe. I mean incentive.
Incentive. Whoops, whoops, whoops.
Those are some good cookies.
I can't go home with cookies, but we'll give them to the administrator. Anybody else? Ms. Turner?
Well, I think we should talk about when they're gonna announce the top five cities for Small Business Revolution. So that will happen next week, I believe.
12.
February 12.
February 12.
Um, and it sounds like it's early in the morning.
In the morning.
Yes.
Between 5:00 and 6:00 AM.
Yes. So everyone should be up early that day, tuning in so that we can get our, you know, because I'm positive we're gonna make it to the top five. I have confidence in us.
You too.
And then we'll need people to vote. So we're gonna have to get the vote out early.
Yeah. So, and.
Early, 5:00 AM.
We did meet with Amanda and she did say that we have to have everything ready to go 5:00 AM, February 12th. We can't lose a minute. And we have to also think beyond Canyon City and Fremont County. Alton, Illinois, in season three, they garnered over 1 million online votes.
Wow.
To win for season four. And we have some pretty good competition from some of the other cities. And so we need resources beyond our county. We need to go to Colorado Springs and to Denver. So, and for every single email, you can vote every, once per day for those seven days that it's open. So if anybody in Canyon City knows anyone who's a celebrity or famous or has, or Instagrammers that have huge followings, we need to know who they are so we can start asking them to, um, promote us and give plugs for Canyon City.
I bet Carrie has some connections.
She's working it. Yeah, we all need to work it.
You can bet our, our median town will be, step right up and take care of it. But someone also had mentioned that the school system has about 1,000 tablets out there. And they, those young people could vote every day.
That the Hive is, is talking about opening their space in order to allow people to come in and vote that don't have the technology, um, knowledge or the physical technology piece. So.
Like to vote at the Hive, buzz on down there. What? This is a tough crowd. Oh, my gosh. All right. Anybody else? Good. Let's go on to consented agenda and ask the city minister, administrator to review the consent agenda and the items.
City council, the mayor. Uh, item A, need to disclose is a submission from an organization which my wife belongs to. Uh, so you recognize that.
Have to recuse yourself from that.
Transparency. This would authorize a street closure on February the 16th, just for 30 minutes from 3:00 to 3:30 for the Zonta Club of LaRoea Gorge for their Main Street event between 5th and 6th. Awareness for Violence Against Women. It's an annual, uh, campaign. So they, I think, have a dance planned and they're going to show a movie. Um.
I must say, we know who in the O'Rourke family has the neater handwriting.
Yeah. Oh, yeah.
Oh, my gosh, yes.
And it's more intelligent too, see. Might want to talk to her in the future. Uh, number B, approval to extend a contract for the Front Range Arbors. We talked about this two weeks ago. Um, there's no price increases. It's an amount not to exceed $10,000. City has over 5,000 trees and this contract addresses about 400 plus trees a year in their bucket trucks. They can get above the 12 feet. Our crews can get up to about 10 to 12 feet and they'll just focus on obvious visual barriers like for street signs or things of that nature. These guys are the pros with their equipment. So they systematically go through the city and, and cut the worst offenders. Um, item number C is approval to extend a contract with Lyle Signs. This is for annual supply of traffic, uh, control signs and sign-making material to Lyle Signs Incorporated. And this for an amount not to exceed $30,000. This isn't an extension and there's no price increase, uh, for this year. Um, item D would award, um, the bid number 1019 for a street sweeper to Ferris Machinery, an amount of $210,065. This is a lease purchase agreement with US Bank. So it's kind of a dual bid since they're our partner in financing for the amount of $224,379. We have a good interest rate there of 3.3%. Uh, be hard to get that for your own automobile. So we feel good about this. This would replace a 2006 Elgin sweeper, uh, seen its better days, and it will be sold at auction. So there may be some resale value, not a lot, but some. And we always have a, a reserve sweeper of, if the main sweeper goes down. So we'll still have that. Item E is similar. It's awarded bid number 1119. This is for a backup loader to Ford Rivers Equipment in the amount of $110,004. This is again, a lease purchase. Uh, I want to point out, there was a little typographical error. That should read $117,500. That's the amount being financed in, uh, through US Bank. And this is a John Deere and it replaces a 2010 John Deere. And unlike the previous piece of equipment that will go to auction, this will be handed to the Parks Department. They traditionally get the hand-me-downs from the Streets Department. Um, but they like it. Um, item F would award, um, this would be for 100 water meters and 200 water meter registers to Neptune Technology. As you know, this is our standardized equipment now. So it's always through, through Neptune. And this is for an amount of $70,175. Um, then finally, approval for job description for the equipment repair shop foreman. Historically, we've never had a shop foreman, which traditionally for equipment service, you'd have one lead person or supervisor. We had the advantage of having George Stapleton for many, many years, both overseeing equipment services and later equipment, streets, and facilities. George is retiring effective May 25th. So we really need to designate someone within that shop to kind of be the lead mechanic and supervisor. Not only will they provide supervision, uh, to the other employees, but they'll also be involved with the, uh, bidding process for equipment, which is very important. And so, uh, we want to promote that. And then I've mentioned to you, it's very difficult to replace people. to replace people with the kind of tenure we've had in the Finance Department. John, who was our chief accountant, retired and generated, had 40 years' experience. Harry has 40 years' experience. It's pretty unique to have that much longevity and skill and experience. What we found after almost nine months recruiting is we cannot find the right party to fill John's shoes. So, we're proposing to split the job in half. Half the job dealt with the general ledger and the annual audit. The other half dealt with budgeting. So, what we're proposing here is that we, we have already two positions that can, one is for accounting manager for revenue, and another one is accounting manager for the general ledger and audit. This would create the same position, parallel to the other two, but for the budget. There will be an expense related to this, but we think we have no other alternative. Having tried to recruit and fill the job that John held for quite a while, we just can't find someone of that breadth of experience and seasoning. Any other questions?
Mr. Meisner?
Are both of those finance positions the same salary range?
Yes, all three of them. There's really three of them that are kind of like triplet positions. One, again, dealing with general ledger and auditing. This one is for the budget, and we already have an existing position for all revenue.
It seems like if we're taking the same job and dividing it by three with the same salary range, we're essentially giving that position an increase.
No, we're taking John's position of chief accountant and dividing it into two positions. One would be the accounting manager for the general ledger and auditing, and then this position, which would be the budget. The other position already pre-existed. And there is a net increase, because John's salary was close to $80,000. These are in the $65,000 range. So, there is a net expense to do this. But we can think of no other, after nine months, we can't think of any other valid alternative if we're going to maintain the stewardship of our finances in the manner that the city has recognized as stellar.
Right. When you were talking about loaders and finances, you mentioned 117?
Related to the bid, the backhoe loader.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, I'm not seeing where that 117 should come from.
I think in your, in your materials there, it had 114. That was just a typographical error. It should be 117, 500. That's the total cost, lease purchase. So, it's
One on lease purchase.
38,000 times 3 is, 38,000 times 3 is
So, that number's incorrect, too. It should be 39,166. I want to just give you the total number. So, if you multiply 39.166 dollars times 3, it would get to 117,500. And we lease purchase these, we, I think historically the city has outright purchased these large pieces of equipment. It's really financially more prudent, given the low interest costs, to spread those costs over a period of three years. Because the longevity of these pieces of equipment is typically at least 10 years.
So, it's ours in three years?
Yes.
For you clear?
Unless the bank can figure out a way how to use a backhoe. But I think it's not a problem as far as financing. And we highlighted that in the budget, that we were going to lease purchase these larger pieces of equipment.
Any questions? Counsel?
I was just wondering if Harry, if you had any comments about the new positions that are being suggested to be created.
As Tony mentioned, we have very difficult time finding, replacing John's position. We are trying from last eight months, and we haven't got any applications to replace. Now, we're looking for a very experienced person, and that is not available right now. We have to split between the department. So, my suggestion was, John was a very experienced person, and if we don't find the experience, then we need to split that job description into two different portions. One is a budget, and one is the general ledger. When you do the budget, both positions will require some kind of training. Without training, we don't have a staff who is experienced, you know. They have very good background, but they need a lot of training. Once that is established, I think those who are coming, taking over my position, will have a better understanding and managing much better this department than what I have.
Anyone else? Questions? Okay, then I would ask for a motion and a second for City Council.
Mr. Mayor?
Ms. Gonzalez?
I make a motion that we approve. Where am I at? The consent agenda for February 4th, 2019, with the typo changes on item F.
E.
E.
Right?
And the agenda.
And the agenda.
And the agenda.
Okay.
Second.
Okay. Motion's been made in second, is there any discussion on that? Hearing none, would you call a roll, please?
Councilmember Cochran?
Aye.
Councilmember Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilmember Hammack?
Aye.
Councilmember Haquez?
Yes.
Councilmember Meisner?
Aye.
Councilmember Turner?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Smith?
Aye.
Unanimously carried.
Thank you. And number eight is consideration adoption by title only of Resolution Number 1. This is Series 2019 entitled Resolution of the City of Canyon City, Colorado, establishing guidelines and delegating authority for the transfer of funds between objects and purposes within the city's budget to meet any unexpected and necessary expenditure for any other object or purpose within the city's budget. Would the administrator like to comment on that?
Yes, this kind of activates what the council's direction was in changing your policy, where we wouldn't bring you back hundreds of reconciliations twice a year, that we've simplified the budget for your oversight, which is more typical, both the state and most municipalities, into these four major object and purpose areas. Part of that was anything above $5,000 the council would have to approve. So, I can have the authority to approve less than 5,000, but at the same time, we will bring you quarterly updates of what those transactions are. And of course, anything above 5,000, you would automatically get at your meetings. And I think there was some corrections on the resolution that would both reflect that we would provide you this information quarterly. I think previously it indicated monthly. And do you have any other questions?
I'm just, objects. It says objects and purposes, I'm having a hard time with objects.
Yeah, this is statutory language. It wouldn't be my first choice of the language to describe what we're doing. These are effectively broad classifications of expenses in four major areas. I mentioned personnel, supplies, you know, capital. There's probably better terms to use than the word object or purpose.
It's the language in your charter as well.
Is it?
Same language in the document.
Okay.
And it should begin March 1st and not February 1st. That's also a correction, so.
So, we have included the corrected resolution. And I hope that City Clerk
Yeah, you should have it at your place.
Corrected one.
So, we, or I will see the verbiage on there for March 1st.
Yeah.
Instead of February 1st?
And quarterly reports.
And quarterly report, quarterly. Okay. Any questions of our administrator or Harry? Mr. Meisner?
Just to clarify that even though we're going to receive a detailed budget for the approval of the budget, once that budget is approved, we're approving it per object and purpose? And, for example, you could move $10,000 within an object or purpose without notifying council. Is that correct?
Under 5,000.
Under 5,000. 10,000, we'd have to notify you. And if we want to transfer between object codes, you know, in excess of 5,000, we'd notify you.
There isn't anything in here that talks about transferring funds within an object, it's only between objects.
Yes.
So, what limits you with moving funds within an object?
There is
I have the authority under $5,000.
So, personal services, I think, was one of the, Carrie can correct me, was one of the objects or purposes we talked about in the ordinance last time. So, they can move money around within that object.
Unlimited amount, within that amount.
Correct, right, Harry?
Under 5,000.
Less than 5,000.
No, but just within the object and purpose. Like, just in personal services, there's no limit to what can be transferred around.
No, no, there is no limit within the
Right, that's what I said.
Okay. So, you're correct.
As long as the total personal services
Right.
dollar amount is maintained, you don't worry about line item.
But if you're moving from personal services to one of the other ones, it's subject to this
The report that you're going to provide us, does it provide us any detail about those transfers that are being made within an object? Or is it only inter
It's only when you transfer from one object to another.
But we don't have a problem, if you want to include the transfers within an object code, we have no problems providing you that information quarterly.
One of my objective
Yes, sir.
One of my objectives with this whole process was to give directors more opportunity to manage. But overall, council has, still has responsibility for that object. And I personally would like to see the report include all transfers, so that we're aware of what's going on, but we don't have to approve them.
Yeah.
Other than over 5,000 transfers between objects and purposes.
Ms. Gonzalez?
So, I have a question about that. So, let's say, one month, a certain amount, let's say $2,500 is transferred from one object to another. The next month, 2,500 is transferred. Is that, does that count as the 5,000? Or are those two separate?
Those are two separate transactions.
Transactions.
However, we still have to report them to you quarterly.
I understand. So, that's where I think the details would come, would come in.
Yeah.
And why that money would be
So, if you see a lot of transfers at the $4,999 level,
Well, yeah, I mean, that's
And they trigger your concerns. So, that's why we want to provide the report.
But my concern would be
Because you do have an oversight responsibility.
2,000, 2,000, 1,800, 2,000, you know, so
You will see that detail.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Good question.
Yeah. I mean, right now, what's happening is you're getting hundreds of those twice a year. Where you have to reconcile the line items. So, hopefully, this will reduce the number, but still give you the fiduciary oversight that the council needs to have. We're trying to strike a balance.
That types of repetitive requests from Department Head, we will question. And actually, City Administrator will question.
Oh, I know you will.
Mr. Meisner?
Well, relative to the detail of the report, Catherine, does item three, my only concern is that it says a detailed report of all transactions pursuant to this regulation, I mean, to this resolution. So, does that mean those transfers relative to the $5,000 limit? Or all transfers?
I think it's more likely to be interpreted the first way you said. So, I would suggest that you add language to say, you know, after all transfers, maybe including, but not limited to transfers within each object and purpose, just to make it really clear that it truly means all transfers.
I concur.
I would agree, yeah.
Any questions of council? Do we have that?
Sorry.
Go ahead.
Paragraph 3 of Page 1 of the ordinance. A resolution.
Did you get that? Okay. Any questions of council? Hearing none, I'd like to entertain a motion in a second. Mr. Meisner?
Mr. Mayor and council, I move that we approve Resolution 1, Series of 2019 with the modification to paragraph. I don't know if it's paragraph. Item number 3 with some verbiage that was mentioned by the attorney that includes all transfers within an object or purpose.
And the March 1st date in a quarterly report.
We've got that.
That's in the amended.
Will they change that in time? Okay. Somebody? Second? Ms. Cochran, thank you. Any discussions on that motion? Questions? Hearing none, would you call a roll, please?
Councilmember Cochran?
Aye.
Councilmember Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilmember Hammack?
Aye.
Councilmember Haquez?
Aye.
Councilmember Meisner?
Aye.
Councilmember Turner?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Smith?
Aye.
Unanimously carried.
Thank you. Number nine is consideration adoption by title only of Resolution Number 3 of Series 2019 entitled Resolution of the City of Canyon City, Colorado, amending the city's fee schedule to add application fees for PUD, Planned Unit Development, and PPD, Planned, shouldn't it be PDD? Applications? Is that PPD or PDD?
PDD, it should be.
What?
PDD.
Yeah, it says
And PUD.
Yeah, mine says PPD. Applications. Could we have a report from the administrator, please?
I'll defer to
I'm sorry.
Dina.
Dina, Ms. Felley, please, and welcome. Would you go ahead?
So, a few weeks ago, I actually noticed that in our fee schedules that identify what fees are due for all different types of land use applications, that the PUD and PDD application fees weren't clearly outlined. And knowing that we may have a, one of the two or both of those types of applications potentially coming in this calendar year, we wanted to make sure that the fees were clarified by adding those into the fee schedule. So, it's basically utilizing the same fees that are being used for major subdivisions in that preliminary process and final process, because both the PUD and the PDD processes are very similar in terms of creating subdivisions. So, we're simply wanting to clarify that language in terms of what the fees are for those two land use applications.
Thank you. Any questions of council? I know that years ago, I believe, there was a lengthy discussion about, is that really what the cost is to staff? 1,500 bucks, $1,000? And I believe that was clarified, but, so the fee And I believe that was clarified, but, so the fee that we're talking about that I saw in, is the same, we've had it, we're just not making it clear? We're not raising it lower or anything like that?
We're, we're not changing any other established fees. They've been in place for quite some time. We simply noticed a glitch. It's, it's sort of the opposite, one of those things that should have been in the junk drawer wasn't. So we're trying to actually get that fee established very clearly in our fee schedules, so that when a potential applicant comes in, they know exactly what their fees are going to be for creating a PUD.
Okay, and I think I was trying to make it clear that these were talked about a long time ago, for actuality, was it really cost staff to do this?
Right.
And that's the number that was arrived at, that felt fair to the staff for the time that would be tied up on that particular project. So. Does that make it?
Simple question, no answer. If they weren't doing that, what would they be doing?
The concept usually with these is, are that this is a private or a special, over and above what the normal conduct of their services to the city would be for a specific type, which would be the specific subdivision, specific individual, or something like that. Because they're not just sitting around doing nothing until someone comes with a plan. There's other things they're doing. Am I correct in that?
We are busy, yes.
Yes, they are. So this is over and above what normally would be their tasks for the city. And they, and we should be compensated for that over and above.
It's not over and above, it's their responsibility that we're going to charge a fee for.
Their responsibility to do it, yes. Any questions? Ms. Turner?
Dina, do you know, is it general practice for municipalities to charge this type of fee?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Any questions of council? I would entertain a motion in a second then. Ms. Turner?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we would adopt resolution number three, series of 2019. With just that small typo in the title that you caught, it should read, "Applications Fees for PUD and PDD Applications."
Second. Ms. Rock, second. Any discussion on that motion? Would you call a roll, please?
Councilmember Cochran?
Aye.
Councilmember Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilmember Hammack?
Aye.
Councilmember Haquez?
Aye.
Councilmember Meisner?
Aye.
Councilmember Turner?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Smith?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Okay, thank you. Number 10, consideration adoption by title only of resolution number four, series 2019, entitled a resolution of the city of Canyon City, council of Canyon City. At least, a resolution for the city of, the city of city council.
Yeah, that's what I said.
A resolution, okay, a resolution of the city of Canyon City, Colorado, establishing its policy and strategy for repayment of the stormwater certificates of participation. Could we have a report from our, Ms. Turner?
Mayor and council, as you know, the council has authorized the issuance of $8 million for a cop certificate of participation for our stormwater improvements. Part of that process, standard for rates, the quality, the city's financial capacity to pay off the interest and the principles of this debt. The discussions with them, though they can't commit to it, it was pretty clear to us that they believe that if the city created a special reserve fund of a backstop for the payment of this annual debt service, they would look very favorably upon that, and that would have a positive impact on not only the credit rating, but its impact on projected interest rates we will pay over the course of these 20 years. And the difference of even 10 or 20 basis points is substantial in interest costs. So knowing that they have postponed their credit rating for us, it was supposed to take place on the 31st of January, to tomorrow morning, 11 o'clock, knowing that we were going to propose this to tonight, so I think that signifies they think it's important enough to delay their meeting to hear what you have to say. But we wanted to lay out our four potential options for you to create such a fund, which we think are prudent. First would be to adjust the rate structures automatically to ensure that you're generating sufficient revenue to pay the debt service annually. Fairly common practice, you may not want to tie the hands of future councils the next one-eaters. Number two, reduce the cost allocation or the operating transfer between the stormwater fund and the general fund for such things as paying for the cost of the street employees or addends time. Sounds like a simple thing, an accounting measure, it has an impact on the general fund. And now we have to find the money on that end of the equation to offset the transfer amount, so easier said than done. Number three would be to utilize existing operating reserves, which we have, however, when you combine the potential 600,000 that we want to set aside with your recent decision on paying for the access control plan, which could be up to 175,000, it drops you slightly below your city council threshold, wanting a 20 to 30 percent operating reserve in the general fund, drops it down to 19.4 percent. Not the end of the world, but we want to make you aware of that. The fourth item, which we personally, Harry and I, think is the best, would be to establish, over the course of three to five years, through savings we can squeeze out of the general fund, this special reserve. Because standard and forward is not going to require that the reserve be established on day one, because they know you've committed to a policy of squeezing out that money over the next three to five years, they will accept that as a sufficient reserve policy. So that's what we would promote. It's not going to be easy, we still have to find the savings annually, but we can fund roughly 150, 200,000 out of that amount on an annual basis, but we'll have to do that. So that's what we think is the most prudent course to take as far as meeting standard and forward recommendation.
Ms. Gonzalez?
So, item four, we can build that fund over time, we don't have to have that money on hand. And you're saying we could have up to $600,000 on reserve?
Yeah, because the annual debt service is going to be in the neighborhood, depending on the final interest rate, in the 600 to 650 range. We're hoping it's less if we get a good bond rating, but right now, we're using 600,000 as a benchmark, which we'll have to set aside.
And they're willing to accept that as, as good practice?
Yes, yes, we would do, they're not selecting an option, but we, we disclose to them the four options that we would discuss with the council, and they were fine with any one of those four.
Now, if, if we were to look at item one, what would we be looking at as far as rate increases? Do you know those numbers?
Be fairly stable. The concern here is, I use Paradise, California, as an example, one never knows if you have a natural disaster. In our case, we're susceptible to land, I mean, wildland fires as they were. They have no income coming in, the town's gone. And that's a worst-case scenario. But I've been in communities where they've had significant natural disasters, and suddenly there's no money coming in from us, or a great diminution of money, that's what this fund would offset. A natural emergency tragedy, or even a man-made one, where people, for some reason, let's say, a core of your city was flooded out or burned out, they can't pay their monthly stormwater fee. So how, what are you doing to offset that loss of income for a reasonable length of time? In this case, for up to a year, the worst-case scenario. I mean, this is a conservative, prudent approach, but we know that these things do happen. And the city financially does not have a lot of resiliency compared to most cities. We have extremely low property tax, based upon the valuation of the property in there. Here, we're very dependent upon the volatility of the sales tax. I mean, again, we could, the bridge is a classic illustration of what happens when you have a major destination drawn, suddenly it's not available for a year or two. Same thing could happen to the train, the river could dry up, there's umpteen different scenarios that could happen where our major source of income is significantly reduced. So that's why we want to see this extraordinary reserve established to counter that potential possibility.
So, help me understand, what is the difference between item two and four?
Two takes your, you currently are incurring expenses in the stormwater fund of employees that are not part of the stormwater fund. The city, many cities have their own employees who are the stormwater fund, we have one. Most of the work being done is being done by the streets department and by Adam. So as a result.
I understand.
Because these are different funds, we have to transfer money back to the general fund to compensate the general fund for the use of those employees.
So how would that be, well?
So if we reduce that transfer amount, that means the general fund's out of balance, we have to find savings in the general fund to offset that loss.
But see, in, in item four, you're already squeezing money from the general fund.
But it's doing it through looking for savings opportunities, not just arbitrarily saying, we're going to underfund and not pay for the employees we're using in the stormwater fund. So it is different. We find these opportunities, and that's what we'll be tasked to do, is squeeze out a couple hundred thousand dollars a year over the next three, four years. We can do that.
You're confident you can do that?
Yes. Otherwise, we wouldn't propose it.
Ms. Smith?
And also concerning the option number two, I thought we had had some discussions that potentially we would use that method. If we did the commercial business incentives, if they have some stormwater quantity mitigation on their properties, that they could have credits.
Yeah.
And we would, that way we could compensate through number two's plan without having to raise stormwater rates.
True.
And so I would like to, so essentially, we're probably going to do two and four, but for two different reasons.
Yeah, we'll bring that to you at the first meeting in March, but there's a high likelihood that we would recommend that a little charging our customers an additional small amount. It could be a dollar for a residential customer, $5 for a commercial customer per month, that we just kind of internally pay for ourselves by reducing that transfer.
Right, because I don't want to see any more rate increases to our residents.
As long as we didn't have about $100,000, I think we could absorb that and find the savings to offset the general fund impact. But when we're talking about 600,000, that's a lot more difficult.
Well, Mr. Mayor, I'm just going to make a motion and see what happens.
All right, let's do that.
I would like to make a motion that we approve resolution number four, series of 2019, for option number four.
I have one last question.
Sure.
Are we, should we be setting a specific amount every year to have come out of the general fund? Or are we kind of just waiting to see what happens? And if there's more funds available one year, then we take more one year, or?
Yeah, we'll determine that each fiscal year, but we know at the ultimate apartment, we have to squeeze.
600.
Over three to five years, so the sooner, my approach, the better. I don't want this task in year five, so, but we can incrementally, I think, get to the destination over the three to five years.
Do we need language that says, you know, minimum every year, 100,000 needs to come out?
I don't think we need that. We know what the goal is, and we know what it's going to take to get there. I don't think we want to be handcuffed to specific amounts in each year.
But.
We might be able to achieve it, you know, more aggressively in the first couple of years, if we see opportunities, if we create savings that we don't today, hello.
But would they require that?
Yeah.
No.
They're simply saying, save the money over this period of time. They don't specify how to do it.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Hammer?
Yeah, and what I would say on that is, is what will happen is that every year at budget time, we'll get to review what has happened and say, "Good job, Tony," or, "Tony, you got to do better," when it comes to the amount that we've set aside.
If you can remember.
If we can remember. That's true.
Well, we're going to actually.
That's true.
Put in the budget, you know, an allocation for this purpose, and you'll see it. We'll discuss with you how we achieve that balancing. It's not, we're not going to wait to the end of the year, we're going to have a budget for it.
It'll be an inside group.
We'll live within that. As long as we don't transfer between our objects, we should be okay.
This is non-object.
Okay, where are we at? We have a.
There's a motion.
Motion.
I will second.
Ms. Cochran, you seconded it?
Sure.
Is there any discussion on that motion? Ms. Turner?
I just have a friendly amendment to remove from the first sentence of city council.
Yeah.
Just fixed that little typo.
That's where my reader got way ahead of my brain. I kept thinking, that doesn't sound right.
It does sound right.
It does. City, city, all right. So we've been seconded, and we're having discussion, you have a discussion? Would you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Cochran?
Aye.
Councilmember Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilmember Hammack?
Aye.
Councilmember Haquez?
Aye.
Councilmember Meisner?
Nay.
Councilmember Turner?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Smith?
Aye.
Motion carried.
So the one is the established reserve funds from general fund resources equal to the annual stormwater debt service over a three to five-year period.
Yes.
That's the one I'm signing.
Yes.
Okay, we'll put that one aside then. Good.
If you could sign it, Harry's going to take it with him now, because he has to send it to them by the morning. They need it 11 o'clock tomorrow.
We'll actually revise it, so don't send it.
Let me have to correct the typo.
What am I?
Revised with this little.
Someone run revise it really quickly.
Oh, sure, okay. As long as we get a signed copy.
Okay. We are. Number 11 is regarding Centennial Park Master Plan Revision. I would invite the city administrator to discuss that.
Yes, Mayor, council, when you adopted the Centennial Park Master Plan last year, one of the proposals was to close off the east entrance and have it removed and replaced with kind of larger grass areas, almost like a little cul-de-sac. Since then, given the popularity, not only the duct, but the splash bed, and other features of the park, the Centennial Park Master Plan has met on October 24th and recognized that given the parking is a premium area, the traffic flows are concerned, the consensus among the committee members is to retain the east entrance and create a one-way traffic pattern. We don't know if it'll be from the east or from the west. Adam is analyzing that now. Most likely going to be on the west side, so you come in on the west side and exit on the east side, but we'll wait till Adam's completed his assessment of that, and that's essentially what they want to do. This will actually, I think, make the park work better, add additional east parking spaces, and will actually cost less than removing the road. So it's a win-win across the board.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
I just want to point out that kind of these concerns arose when we had our big concert at the park this last summer, that the park, the parking was full, and we need to make sure we don't take away that parking. And also, we had a fire truck that came in for an emergency, and so I was a little bit worried about the access for emergency vehicles, and also the walkability for our elderly to get to that duck pond. They particularly love that duck pond, and we would be taking away parking that was just right there where they could access it easily. And so we wanted to make sure that we maintain that. And also, the soccer, the Colorado Soccer Club decided that they would prefer there's, there was going to be a soccer field right there, and they preferred to do enhancements at Mountain View Park instead, which we, they got a grant for to do, and potentially have a soccer complex, perhaps with the community rec center. So all those factors came into us coming here today. I do have a question, though, Tony. On the, on our original parking plan, in front of the duck pond, there's two, it shows two handicap spots.
Yes.
And in the new parking, it only shows one handicap spot.
Double check on that. Sounds like two would.
So I think we probably need to maintain that. And also, the committee also really strongly suggested that, depending on how, I guess, how the study goes, for the one-way, that we have access on the west entrance, not be one-way, that needs to be both ways, but maybe just one way on the east coming out.
Well, it would be both ways, just as you went down to the boat landing area.
Just to the boat landing and back, but one way when you go across and over.
That would turn it.
Yeah.
Well, that is.
This looks like there are two handicapped parking spots.
Yeah, that's what I thought.
I'll double check, I believe there's supposed to be two, so.
On the new parking?
Yeah.
They're just separated by a.
That's got to be the old parking.
That's on the old parking.
Because it's going.
The new parking's in the grass area, it won't be in front of the duck pond, it'll just be to the side of the duck pond.
Yep.
Does the, does the road, when you enter from, the restroom is there, and then you take a left, that goes down to the boat ramp? Will that be in there, or is that gone? I don't have anything above the word revised.
Isn't that towards the bridge and not the boat ramp?
Yeah, that's towards the bridge.
Well, towards the bridge.
Towards the bridge. The boat ramp's over here.
So, is that going to continue, or that discontinue?
Which one's he talking about?
And so we'll just have.
That will be closed, so it'll.
Oh.
Yeah.
Just be a right turn? So that'll just be a right turn?
So this parking will be taken away?
Yeah, so just a right turn out. Yeah, well.
Yeah.
This will all become like grass, not some grass. So that road area where the old, where the parking is now, I don't think there's going to be grass, I think he was going to do road base or something, so it's easier cleanup for the ducks.
And that would also allow access, easier access for people when they do a, with their tents and all that other stuff that goes down there.
I know, I'm going to ask.
Yeah, it was better for, like, the vents there for the tents and the vendors.
We have to provide well for the beer tent.
So, can we back up a little bit? Because I'm a little bit confused.
Yes, ma'am, go right ahead.
The original parking is being taken away.
Right, so, and it was going to be taken away already?
Yes.
-on the master plan.
So it's going to be moved to the other side of, of the pathway.
Yeah, so instead of being right smack in front of the wide part of the duck pond, it's more like if you take a turn, you'll take a turn right up the road, and there'll be parking right there.
Okay, so all this, this will be closed off and filled in?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
But the parking spots will still be nice and close for the elderly, for those with mobility issues.
Any further questions?
Mr. Mayor.
Oh, Mr. Hammerick. Mr. Meisner?
While I originally supported that plan, when I look at it now, and, and knowing that parking in that whole park is a premium, I question why we would take out existing parking? Because we have no practical use for that particular area. I mean, that road that we're going to take out, that now parallels the pond, that, that area is going to be of little or no value in the future.
I think they're going to do, like, some garden areas and still do some beautification and-
It's just going to be gravel.
Gravel. Road base, right?
Well, I think, yeah, road base for part of it. Yeah, road base because it was better for the ducks.
So, I kind of have a corollary question there. With the existing parking and the, and the new proposed parking, is it a net-net on parking spaces, or do we end up with more or less, or what?
You can't, you can't compare those two, because the old parking was not intended to be there. So, the, the new parking is a net.
Okay, so I, I understand that, but nonetheless-
Oh.
-considering the old parking, and we're establishing new parking, making old parking go away, is it a net-net on parking spaces?
I thought that Rex, Tony, I thought Rex mentioned that they were the same. I mean, that's how we came up, I think that's how Rex came up with those number of spaces.
Number of spaces.
Is he essentially moved that parking from the pond, uh, south.
South.
Yeah, but the way it is now with the revisions that we made, aiming towards, you know, the new master plan, it's kind of awkward right now. There's no place for them to really back out properly, and if you park at those spots as they are right now, there's-
It can't be any worse than those people trying to park in those spots right now with the traffic.
I, I agree. It's a dead end, but it's still parking, and-
And it's kind of ugly. This way, there's consistency.
All right, change it. Or paint it pink, maybe it will be ugly.
We, where are we at? Do we have to make a motion? Do we just say-
I got a question here.
Go ahead, Mr. Haques.
Before we get on. If it's possible, Tony, with Adam and that, when we come back with all these areas where the parking is, I'd like to see where they're going to locate the handicap parking spaces as it relates to the total outlay. The reason I ask that is because, for instance, I mentioned this to one of the county commissioners, but it fell on deaf ears. If you look at the building over there where they have the handicap parking, it's all the way away from where the doors are, where they have to go. And, and the purpose for handicap parking is to make it accessible to the needed areas. So that's what I would like to see at the final deal, is where are we putting these handicap parking? Because I want them to be accessible to the things that matter the most in that park, because that's the purpose for the handicap parking. Other than that, I don't have a problem with, you know, all the other stuff we're doing.
Okay, we can check on that.
Just a quick question. Tony, you said that it'll, we're saving a lot of money from not tearing out that road. Is that, where's that money being used now? Has it been re-
Originally, we thought this would cost about half a million dollars, and then it might cost about a hundred thousand less. So, once we, we're assuming that, once we get the bids, we'll confirm that, and you can make a determination of what you want to do with that excess. Save it, or reinvest it, some other elements of the park, or some other-
Put it towards the stormwater fund.
Yeah, but we're waiting to see what the bids are, but our expectation is the, the final amount will be less than we anticipated.
Any other questions of council?
Mr. Mayor?
Miss Ma'am?
I'd like to make a motion that we approve Centennial Park master plan revision.
Second.
Motion's been made seconded for approval of the master plan revision. Any discussion on that motion? Mr. Hammerick?
Yes, the, if this is approved, is it possible that we could take, extend these parking spaces, these new parking spaces, to the south following the road? I mean, if, if we're really short of parking there, is it possible that we could do a further amendment to the master plan to extend those parking spaces to the south?
You could extend them all the way up to Griffin, but Griffin didn't want to do that.
Well, I think, yeah, Rex Brady was really concerned he didn't want to tear down any of the trees. He's already tearing down one tree to create this parking, which it needed to probably come down anyways, and he, he just about dies if we tear down a healthy tree. And so I think, you see on that map, there's a, a tree on that plot, so we might have to work around some of that, or-
Go around the tree.
Or say that tree needs to come down.
Shaded parking.
Shaded parking.
Or it might be advisable to plant some new trees now.
Yeah, yeah, that's true.
Really, after the, the committee, you selected a committee of citizens and council members, so if you want to have them go back and take a look at that, could you come back with another amendment?
We tried to talk about that, but, but as mentioned, staff were not open to that option.
If it's not our decision, it's yours. You can make it right now if you want to give the authority to-
Just telling you, you can't have an event in that park currently without a major parking problem.
No, we, we recognize that.
Because we're not going to develop the parking that was part of the master plan on, on Griffin and Fourth Street. So we lost the whole concept of getting rid of that parking. We were sold with the fact that we're going to make parking on Griffin and on Fourth Street. And now, we've reneged on that deal. We're not going to do that. So, that extra parking that we had on the outside of the park is gone.
Well, we still could revisit that issue.
Well, then revisit it.
I say we, we just ensure that we keep the same amounts, and we can, we can always add more parking in the future if it's not-
Yeah, I mean, whether the, either the council, if you want to punt it back to the committee, they could review this, or the council could just make the decision. We have that authority.
Okay, the motion's been made and seconded, and now we're in discussion. I'm going to call end of the discussion, or what are we going to do? Would you call a roll, please?
Councilmember Cochran?
Aye.
Councilmember Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilmember Hammerick?
Aye.
Councilmember Haques?
Aye.
Councilmember Meisner?
Nay.
Councilmember Turner?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Smith?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Okay, thank you. Let's move on to the wayfinding direction sign. I would invite the-
It'll be a dual effort here, to be, myself. We wanted to bring this back to you, not because we want to revisit decisions that the council's made, it's because of the financial impact this decision has, not only now, but in the future, because we're going to be spending two hundred thousand dollars on these wayfinding signs now, but in the future, we're going to be spending hundreds of thousands of dollars more. We want to make absolutely sure we don't have a, a dog in this fight, whether it's black, brown, pink, or purple. We just want you to feel confident in your decision, so we asked the consultant to mock up the different colors that you were debating over. So much like if you were painting a house, one of the best things to do is swab a bunch of paint, different paint, on the house before you paint the whole house. So that's all we're doing, is bringing this back to you, make sure that you're confident in the selection you've, you've made, because it'll be a selection, not only will it cost, but it will be with the city for decades. So, if you want to reaffirm it, if it's brown, let us know that. If it's a different color, let us know that, before we send this out for verification.
Okay. Ms. Smith, did you want to add a comment? Ms. Gonzalez?
So, I guess what I'd like to know is, there was a committee that was formed last year in order to put these signs together. What was their recommendation? Did they have a, a color specification?
Dina could speak to you about them. I, I don't recall that there were different choices, and that's why we brought back the council back in the summertime, I think it was June twenty-seven, a whole wide spectrum of different choices. You narrowed it down to the brown. But Dina?
Yeah, I think the, actually, when I went back through some of the materials this, today, or this morning, some of the earlier materials actually had the, the black as the background, I think, and that was, that came before council in one of the work sessions, and then, um, there was a request to see the brown. So then we asked the consultant to also, to show both brown and black versions, and so that's the reason that they created both versions.
So I, I, I was under the impression that when council voted on it, it was selected brown.
I think we just did thumbs up or thumbs down.
Very good.
That's correct.
I didn't vote brown.
I didn't say you did.
But I know that the decision was brown.
Yes.
But, um, I want to know what, I mean, we can all decide all day long what we like and don't like. I like my house gray. You may like yours blue. Our matter of preference doesn't really speak to our community. So what I'm getting at is, what did our committee recommend? Because I know there were a number of professionals and a number of individuals that, that are skilled in this more than we are.
Well, I, I wouldn't say they're more skilled than us, as community members and some business members, but they would still need to have the, the same concept to see the big, see the mock-up, and they never had an opportunity to see the big mock-up, and voice what they preferred on the big mock-up for black versus white, once you kind of see what the real product is.
Okay. So, I, I guess what I'm saying is, is, if they had a color preference-
They did.
Yeah, I don't remember. I mean, I just, I would have to go back and go back through sort of the final direction from the committee. I don't recall that specifically. As I mentioned, the only thing that I found briefly this morning was that it seemed like the black seemed to be the background color moving forward, and then there was the request from council, at a council meeting, to also see the brown. So then, the consultant provided both, the black and the brown, and then the, the voting happened at that June meeting. Okay.
And he chose brown.
Yeah, there's been a lot of evolving of the signs.
There has been a lot of evolving from the signs, and I just wish the signs would get up.
We can.
Okay.
Because people are voting on it.
I know, but why are we voting on it again? That's what I, that's why I'm, I mean, we voted on it once.
All right, let's move on, then.
All right, sorry.
Do we want to say, was brown the preferred color?
That's already documented in record.
It is?
Yes.
All right, then let's go forward with brown.
Was that an official vote, or was that just a thumbs up, thumbs down?
No, that was a special meeting, and it was, brown was the preference.
I mean, if you're going to change a color, you got to, you got to have a new vote.
Yes, that's what we-
That's what staff is requesting us to do, Mayor.
Okay, do you want a new vote? Does council want a new vote, or stick with the brown?
I'm against brown. I'm against brown.
I prefer the black as well, but-
Let's do a new vote.
Just for the record.
Okay. Mr. Hammerick?
Mr. Mayor, if we're going to do a new vote, I would point out that there is a national standard that shows these types of wa, wayfaring signs in brown, that, that tourists who we hope to have, recognize these signs, can be familiar with through the national parks and other places that have these particular types of signs in brown.
Okay.
I think you'll find a national park sign in black.
Would someone like to make a motion, one way or the other?
We have nothing to motion on.
Make a motion with the color in it, whatever color you intend to do, and then we can vote it up and down.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion that we approve the browns color signs that was originally voted on by council.
Second.
Made and seconded. Any comments from that motion? Any discussion? Questions?
I've got a comment.
Yes, ma'am.
I find it really frustrating that we're voting on something we've already voted on. I don't, I just, I find it irritating.
Okay.
We've spent, we spent hours in these meetings about the signs. We dedicated a lot of time and attention to it many, many months ago, and here we are now still at square one with getting those signs up, because we're going to have a vote on something we've already voted on. It's, I just find it really irritating.
Okay.
Well, I don't, I don't think we're on square one. I think what's taken so long is the company that's doing the design for us has taken forever.
No, what's taken so long is is that the brown that was approved has not been moved forward, because staff have held it up. That's what's taken so long.
All right, let's vote, then. Would you call a roll?
Councilmember Cochran?
Aye.
Councilmember Gonzalez?
Nay.
Councilmember Hammerick?
Aye.
Councilmember Haques?
No.
Councilmember Meisner?
Aye.
Councilmember Turner?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Smith?
Nay.
Motion failed.
And it's still not a hundred percent.
Sorry, motion passed.
Passed.
That was my error. Motion passed, brown.
Okay, so we're at brown.
And we found something that Councilman Meisner could vote yea on tonight, so that was really good.
Okay, moving on. He's too close to me.
On the bright side.
Um, let's move on. We asked for a consensus, and we had some discussion questions that came outstanding council discussion list. And what is council's pleasure? Should I read them, and we'll either decide to talk about them, or just move on? Okay, hearing none, I'll just go ahead and, number one was a special event, street closure. Would you like to continue having it approved by city council on the consent agenda, or have staff approve it for us? Ms. Gonzalez?
I think, I think it should still come to city council, so that we can be aware of what's happening, um, and, and maybe help foster some of these events that are great to our community.
Anything else? Ms. Turner?
Well, I wonder if it might be more expedient to those groups if we did have staff approve, rather than having them wait for a meeting? But I think that if we were going to have staff do the approval, we'd want to have some criteria that, that we would approve for what we consider to allow them to approve without us, but-
Can we, yeah, can we say something like, you know, as long as the majority of the business owners and the police department and fire department and everybody else agrees, then, you know, it doesn't need to come before council, as long as certain criteria are met, or?
Well, and I think to Dolly's point, I would still want notification of what was passed, so that we know these events are coming, so we can support them.
Right.
Announce them.
But I think some of them are getting delayed a little bit, because they're waiting on council meetings to be approved.
What do we do now? What's the criteria? Do we have the police department checking, the fire department, or anything else?
Yeah.
Everybody's got to sign off on it.
So, what if the staff was to run that down, and then come up and say, "This has all been spoken for and done, and then if they want to come, we can announce and do the thing," but that's the criteria that we used in the past? Would you want to embellish that criteria, or change it, or is that acceptable?
I, I mean, it's pretty involved now. I mean, every department has to sign off on it, and technically, the, the, I don't know that it says residents or businesses that are involved in the area of the street that you've closed have got to sign off on it.
Yeah.
I don't think we want to make this harder for anybody trying to-
Yeah, just keep it simple.
Yeah.
Yeah, just keep it simple. That's the point, was to make it easier for everybody.
And we certainly, if you wanted to defer to the staff, we'll certainly provide you a weekly report of which streets have been approved or disapproved or closed. And you can always bring the matter back up to the council, just like on our liquor license issues, if there's something you don't like, you have the right to bring it before yourselves and.
Tell me your mic is not on.
Sorry about that. You know, you can bring the matter back up, so it's not a foregone conclusion, even if the staff were to approve it or disapprove it, you could always override that.
Yeah, I mean, certainly don't want to make it more difficult, and I think it would be more expedient for these groups to have staff be able to just prove it, rather than having to wait for a council meeting.
And just give us a memo in our packet that we happen. And the idea that we've talked about all this stuff is we get to meet two weeks, two days every month, and so many hours. If we can make it more meaty and get rid of stuff that we probably don't need to be doing, that would be fine.
So then my question is, what's an acceptable amount of time to schedule an event like this?
Well, I think this is just to decide if we want to talk about this more in the future, so if we want to talk about staff doing it, then it'll be on a future agenda item, and then we can really get into the details of it.
All right.
So do we want to talk about it more?
Yeah.
So, we should bring that up, put that on the agenda, okay? Number two, would you like to further?
We already covered that in today's agenda.
Oh, okay. The Dairy Queen, I want hot fudge. Eric, the current, hot fudge. The current Dairy Queen sign issue is already in the fate of the courts. As such, we will only be able to discuss possible future changes to the ordinance to allow businesses to put off-premise signs on private property throughout town. If that's a question, that's a statement. I personally have no problem. If I want to rent a corner of my property for a sign that says, welcome downtown to the left, I should be able to do that without coming to city council, and without being overruled and off-site sign. I don't understand the concept of off-site sign. I think it's ridiculous, but apparently staff doesn't.
Well, just for the record, it's not the staff, it's your existing city.
I am sorry. I apologize, you're right. It's an existing rule, and I don't like it.
It's a typical rule for communities, though. It's very typical to cut back on clutter and confusion of branding.
But you're also procreating my private property. I broke the law egregiously when I had the other office building, because I put a sign up that said downtown Canyon City with an arrow. That was wrong. That's against the law. What do you think about that? I put down Farmer's Market.
Yeah.
Free on my sign, big sign out front. That was wrong. I just agree with it.
So I guess the question is, do we want to discuss this further or not?
I do. Okay, let's put that on agenda for a discussion.
Well, we only two said yes. We didn't see what everybody else says.
Ms. Turner?
I'm not interested in changing the ordinance, but I have heard a complaint or a concern from the current business owner in that location about the signage that they are permitted to put up now, because there's already that DQ sign there. And so I would like to see a resolution to that issue, because the current business owner who's at the location is frustrated that she's not able to perform her business in the way that she would like to, under the lease that she has with her landlord. And, so I'd like to see staff go back and communicate with that business owner, so that she can feel satisfied that she's being heard in this process. Because it's not her fault that her landlord has this other sign on that property. That's my concern about this issue.
Well, she's being heard, that's why we took it to court, and it's out of our hands, it's in the municipal court.
Well, I believe she's a party to that action.
No, she's not, and she does.
There's issues with her application that we probably shouldn't be discussing in the meeting, so I think there's a little more detail.
Well, I'd like to, I've liked her to be able to have a forum then with staff. That's what I'm saying. I'm not saying we need to resolve or discuss the details of her issue now. But she's not satisfied, she is a new business, we've all committed to being business friendly, and so I'd like to see us circle back with her then, and see if we can come to a more reasonable resolution with her.
And perhaps just some knowledge of the process that's going on. It sounds to me like the process may resolve her issues.
I, I don't know enough detail to say one way or the other.
Yeah, we probably shouldn't go into details on that. So, we want to put that on agenda for a discussion?
Well, we have to finish asking everybody.
Okay, I'm sorry, Ms. Cochran, thank you, Ms. Smith.
It sounds to me like the, the sign ordinance that we have could probably use some revision, so I would say that it requires further discussion.
Your, your sign regulations need a complete and utter overhaul. They need to be tossed out, almost essentially. Like, forget the off-premise part, but if you want to talk about that at the same time, but I know that's on Dina's list, she's not here anymore, but I know that's something she really wants to see done, so it's up to you guys how you want to handle that.
Should we just put this into that discussion of the total overhaul and include this as a major talking point?
Yeah, and so, once you get that process rolling, planning commission will also be part of that discussion.
And I think with the, the addition that, as Ms. Turner, Ms. Turner requested that, that staff circle back with this business owner, and let them know what's going on.
Well, yeah, and I don't know what the details are, but I, because I was able to talk to the business owner as well.
You mean the business?
Of the candy shop. She would like to be able to put some signs up.
Why can't she?
The municipal code is telling her she can't.
I'm not, I'm not sure that's really accurate. I'm sorry. Like, I've had a detailed conversation with staff, I'm aware of the application.
Okay.
The, the application itself, regardless of the case with Dairy Queen, there's issues with her application that are holding up the processing of it, so I think.
So she might need some clarification and looking with.
I agree, there needs to be some clarification, but that's truly what the issue is.
So you're trying to tell me there's two sides to every story?
It's a little more nuanced than she thinks.
Two signs to every story.
So that's going to come up in the normal course of events when we talk about the signage code?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, that will come up again. Should add, should?
There's some typos.
Should we add vaping to our, who typed this? Who?
That was me.
Oh.
But I'm hoping that maybe something happened in translation.
My brain and my mouth are not connected well today. Ask my staff, should we add vaping to our current smoking ordinances right now? The ordinance just included marijuana and tobacco cigarettes. In public places where we outlaw regular smoking, should we also outlaw vaping?
I'm not sure that's right, I'm sorry, but your current smoking includes electronic battery-operated devices?
That's what I thought.
I thought that was from the parks.
Okay, so you're talking about like in public buildings?
Like, within 15 feet from the doorways and all that. I was thinking that might be good for a citizen survey question.
Relates to public facilities. Not, but we already have it governed, that you're prohibited from smoking or vaping in certain sections of the park. This would govern our buildings.
Well, and this is, but it also includes any place of employment, which is any indoor area or portion there under control of an employer, so the employer can impose these rules as well, so it's not just parks in that section, so.
So it sounds like we pretty much have that covered.
We can double-check it to make sure it's everywhere, if that's what you'd like us to do.
We can outlaw it for the city itself, but for certain areas and distances from storefronts, like we have the regular cigarette, and that is mentioned in code. Okay? Should we move on? Let's move on.
So we're going to, we're going to establish that it really is covered?
Yeah, if you, you don't mind.
We'll just double-check to make sure.
Just double-check it, sure, sure. Should we adopt an ordinance banning grazing and watering cattle on the Royal Forest Park? I think probably, you can do all you want, but if you don't fence it out, they still can use it.
Cows don't understand the word ban.
No, but I think it's appropriate to just have it in place for the owners to say.
She has a point.
I mean, obviously the cows don't, don't read ordinances, but I think it's appropriate for the city to have something in place saying that we don't want it happening. And then if anything happens in the future, we've covered ourselves and said, it's an ordinance, and you violated that.
Does that put the landowner or the cow owner at liability to put the fence up?
No.
No. No.
No.
No, it doesn't do anything with the fence, it's just kind of covering our.
Just an extra bullet to work with.
So the fence, in Colorado, it's a fence-out, you know, state, so that's just a, that's a damages issue, so we're not, I don't think the city's real concerned about damages, they just don't want the cattle in the park. So it'd be like a criminal penalty, be written in a mini-court for a violation of the ordinance, so, yeah, but it would be the owner of the livestock.
I guess we need to talk about it.
Would, but wouldn't, since we don't, since it's a fence-out, and we don't fence, why would we take a criminal court? Isn't the right thing? Is it a trespass?
Yes.
Trespass.
Yeah, so that, yeah, if you, if you want liability for damages, that's when you have to put the fence, but we're not, I don't, I'm not hearing concern about that issue, so, this would just be a trespass.
Mr. Meisner?
Correct me if I'm wrong, but.
On the cow. Well, on the, I understand.
No, we're not going to drag the cattle in before the, after.
Correct me if I'm wrong, but due to the open range laws of the state of Colorado, there's nothing we can do about it currently, because it's open range and it's not fenced.
Well, that's not true in entire Colorado. There are areas where it's not open range. There are lots of areas where it is open range, but not the entire state of Colorado, okay? And that's why some of them areas will indicate that, that this is available area, which is open range. So to say it's open range in Colorado is, is not correct.
Well, and I think too.
That's opinion.
Even, even if it is an open range state, you still have to provide food and water for your cattle, and, and they're not doing that because the food and water are on our property, is I think where the issue is.
And that's trespass.
So the question is, do we want to have further discussion on this?
Yeah.
Do you want to have?
Catherine's already drafted an ordinance, we can bring it to you on February 18th.
Okay.
I see, yeah.
And half the fence is already built, the other half is, we built this year.
I see a lot of thumbs. All right, that's what we're going to do, thumbs have it. Holy cow. Is that for a black or brown cow? This is a rough crowd tonight. All right. Should we move our city council study sessions on Wednesday down to the main level of council chambers? I don't understand that.
Down there.
Oh, down there.
We tried it once.
It took me a couple times to read that, too.
I thought from upstairs to downstairs. So this is the, the general government, it's the general government and the vision meeting, we're going to move, you want to move it? I don't really want to, but, go ahead, Mr. Meisner.
In our retreat, we talked about trying to change that atmosphere. Unfortunately, none of the tremendous technology that we have in this building allowed us to do that, so the first broadcast that we did had no
Audio.
Sound. Sound and limited video, and we're making our judgment based upon that one meeting.
Well, yeah, I didn't really like it, because I felt like there was a barrier, like visual barrier between us and the audience. It was kind of uncomfortable.
Good thing there's not one now.
And they sit on the, well, but I can see them face to face, and on the table, some people had mentioned that we don't, we also have kind of a barrier, too, for our books and our pencils and our phones, and it was, it looked messy, it looked unprofessional as well, so, I kind of prefer the safety up here.
Do you want to try thumbs up, thumbs down? There.
Doesn't matter.
Frank?
I didn't like it either. My feeling is this.
Guide us, Frank.
We have visual contact with the audience right here, and you can see their faces, you can see their impressions and everything else. I don't care where you're going to sit. Unless you put a camera in front of each individual sitting down there to see what they're looking at, you're not going to have that, and we have that, so, I, I think it, personally, I got a sore neck trying to look at everything around there. Especially trying to hear people at the microphone.
Okay, and then, Ms. Turner?
Well, I appreciate that Frank can see the audience from where he sits, but I have to crank my neck to see them from where I sit, so, and I think with the discussion that we had during the retreat was that this would be for meetings where we're really interested in a conversation amongst ourselves to, for coming up with agreement amongst ourselves on issues that we're not ready necessarily to vote on yet. It was meant to be more of a, how can we have a more open and casual discussion that will encourage more discussion in a less formal way?
So, maybe we should try it a couple more times before we make a final decision?
I don't think we gave it enough time. We gave it one meeting, we didn't try any other arrangements.
The problem is, we'd have to spend $30,000 on mics to, to outfit it for down there.
Is it, is this a meeting that we need to have televised necessarily?
Yes, all your meetings are televised.
Well, I mean, not all of the times when more than two of us are together are televised, so I just.
Yeah. I mean, your vision meetings and your government, general government meetings are all televised.
Yeah, I think for transparency, that's pretty important.
Will the new equipment that we're set to purchase this year allow us to have more flexibility with the camera?
With the camera, yes. It doesn't address the, the sound issue, the audio.
Why not?
And where are our buttons?
You guys are.
I mean, because we wanted to avoid spending $30,000, but if that's your wish, that's what we'll do.
No, I don't want to spend money.
No, we've gotten quotes from professionals.
I say we revisit this when our technology is up to speed.
Want to get the new cameras in, and then try, try it out?
Because we can still have a very casual conversation from where we're sitting.
If, if we can't have audio, we, you can't do it.
Right.
You have to have that.
And if the price for the audio is $75,000, what you quoted last time, or $30,000, what you're quoting this time, or whoever's quoting that.
Well, I may misquote it, but what was the number?
We quoted $30,000.
Last time?
Yes.
That's the number that.
That's the numbers we got from the firms we contacted. I mean, until we actually put it out to formal bid, I can't tell you what the exact price is going to be, but we did go out and check with firms that provide that service, as far as portable mics, that was the quote we got back. I hope it's less.
Whatever council.
It seems unreasonable to me to spend that amount of money just to have a.
We seem to have a little angst over this. What, what do you feel, Harry? Should we wait till we get the new cameras, and then give it a go again, see what happens?
Yeah, but if you get the new cameras, without the audio, you're stuck.
Yeah.
Let's table it till we do our next list.
It's just a better-looking silent movie.
Yeah, let's put it back on the list next year.
All right, let's put it back on the next come budget. On the list one come budget time.
Okay.
And Harry will come back and guide us. Okay. Okay, is it the, is it the council's pleasure to send the mayor to the Bahamas for two weeks?
To where?
The Bahamas?
You just went.
What? No, okay.
That would cost $30,000.
That's $30,000, and there will be no sound. Okay, would you like to revisit short-term emergency shelter solutions and funding for the homeless?
I have a story to share.
Yes, ma'am, is it on the, what, on the homeless?
Yesterday, my husband and I met a young father with four kids and one on the way. He just moved here, looking for work, good kid, good little family, and he has been going to the church across from Loaves and Fishes. What is the name, Mount View or Grand View?
Mm-hmm, Mountain View.
Ma-
Grand View.
Something View. Anyways, the pastor that came and spoke with us, the cowboy, cannot remember his name. Put him up for seven days in a hotel, him and his family. Emergency money is being utilized for homelessness in our community, so I just want to make that loud and clear. There are emergency services out there that are doing what they need to do to take care of the homeless in our community.
Absolutely, I absolutely agree. We did set aside some money to see if we could do something this winter to add to that, and we've worked and worked and worked to try and have some good viable solutions, and it just seems like the viable solutions are the long-term ones. We've had, so, I felt an obligation to put this on there, based on recent emails.
I understand, and I, I want to make it clear that I've seen firsthand that a family in need has been helped, and after those seven days are up, there's another solution. Because there are organizations out there that do not want to see him on, on the streets.
Thank you. Any comments of council?
Well, if I look at this still right, we're going to be talking about, along with opiate, homeless issues, so, I mean, right now, I would think that that discussion will come up
Wednesday.
Wednesday.
Yeah.
So, we can just let this go, and like I say, it'll come up Wednesday.
Thank you. What do you think? Okay.
I don't think we ever stopped talking about it.
No.
No, we haven't.
I mean, it's.
I'm not sure if there's any solution, but when you keep talking about, it will come up Wednesday. Okay? And is, is there support to collaborate with other entities on expanding Loaves and Fishes if they can secure grant funding?
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay.
So that, that was important for me to know, as I'm having some more conversations with Loaves and Fishes. I needed to know that we had that support.
My only question is, who are the other entities?
County.
Huh?
County.
Collaborate, what?
That's it?
Well, I'm sure we'll find as many entities as we can.
Well, I think it's, it's important to know who all the other entities are going to be with regards to us getting involved with that, that we can't just say one organization, because it's going to take more than that to get these things going. So it's important that we know who all of the entities are willing to step up to the plate.
But I think that that's a future conversation where we delve into the details of where the grant funding is coming from.
They, I think, I think Frank, what the, what the opposite of this would be, we don't want to hear any more from, about Loaves and Fishes.
I understand what you're talking about, but it's still going to come back to that point, that we need to know who all the entities are, and we need to have them at the plate ahead of time, not after we decide to get involved in it.
We haven't decided to get involved, but we're interested, we're interested in hearing, interested in hearing.
Okay, next one? Would you like to pursue a state grant to refurbish abandoned single-dwelling and mobile homes for low-income and/or transitional housing?
Off the bat, I'll say no.
Ms. Turner?
Well, yeah, I'd like, if there's grant money out there where we could be refurbishing places to have low-income housing, that's a great need in our community, I think we should move forward with that, or at least consider it.
So this, Tony, would this be a staff level, would the, would requests come in to staff to help write a grant or something like that?
Adam, Adam Dever at UCAG has offered to write the grant.
So they've offered to write the grant.
What about that great little organization that came to us for community funding?
Yes.
I thought it's called Home?
Uh-huh, yeah, Pam Flint. She does that. I mean, couldn't we coordinate with her somehow, in her organization?
If we want to pursue this conversation, yes.
If there's grant money, if there's, I think anything.
We should try anything that's going to give us an opportunity to address a segment of the homeless situation, whatever that is.
We can look at it and always, if we don't like it, we don't have to pursue it, but if there is grant money and help from COG or something like that, I think that would probably be fine. But if there is grant money and help from COG or something like that, I think that would probably be fine.
And it probably would require some match, even if it was an in-kind match or monetary match. There would still be a commitment from city.
Frank will give us the match.
Well, a match isn't burning downs.
Okay. Should we create riverfront rezoning and master planning for infrastructures? For instance, commercial uses, streets, and utilities, et cetera?
That's a thumbs up from me.
Yeah, I think we really need to do the riverfront. Right now, it's industrial.
Yeah.
That's not going to work.
And I want to point out that, because we brought this list because we wanted to have an opportunity to talk together instead of just one-on-one with Tony. And I just want to point out that Tony provided some of these questions, this one in particular, because he is embracing this concept. And so, he's coming, instead of coming to us one-on-one, he decided to add this to our list so we could talk about this together.
That would be good. And, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to, the, so I had business in Pueblo today and went over to Pueblo and went on the River Walk. And over there on the River Walk, they have constructed someone, a private entity, has constructed very nice-looking condominiums right there on the River Walk, overlooking the River Walk area, similar to what, what Buena Vista has done with their, with their zoning. It was very, very attractive. The only problem they have is that the, that River Walk area right now is just a mud flat, and it's a stinking mud flat. And there were an awful lot of condos there for sale. We have much better to offer with, if we can get the right zoning along our river.
Yeah, it, I've seen, I've been here a long time. That's something that should be, it's a long time coming because that is industrially zoned down there. And I think the last thing we want to have is more industry there. It should be elsewhere, more appropriate. So, I think the answer is yes. I think Dina has talked about having that done. So...
Can we revisit number seven? I just want to clarify. Jamie Bennett at Grand View Christian Church, I was reminded so gracefully by Cindy.
Okay.
Is the, is the cowboy, church cowboy?
Okay.
All right.
Okay.
Do you want to consider creating business development incentives on the riverfront, if so, why? You know, that might go hand in glove with which, what's going to happen when you rezone it. Once we rezone it, I think I would be interested, depending on the cost, to directing businesses there that would be ideal for the type of zoning we're going to create.
We do have some businesses now that are interested in receiving some incentives for development there, so we might want to have that conversation sooner than, than later.
I have a quick question.
Sure.
Fire safety grant, could it be used on some development down there? Or no? It has to be on older buildings? If nobody's utilizing it in the area that we have determined...
Yeah, the council can always, you know, redefine the definition for its use. Tent was to stimulate business, whether it's new or old. It's creating business, yeah.
Something similar or re...
Yeah, we can come up with a list of, you know, traditional type of financial incentives. I just want to note that in that corridor between the park, the river, and the property you're about to purchase, the city's invested $3 million in the last three years, more than anywhere else in the city.
And I think part of that is a business incentive because it's made more attractive and amenable for development.
So, you've set the table for success.
But we want to talk about incentives. Yes, no?
Yes, we want to talk about incentives.
Yeah, we do that.
I, I don't, I do, but I wouldn't limit those to the riverfront.
No, just, yeah, just business incentives.
Oh, good point.
It's just not riverfront we're worried about, but...
Just business incentives in general.
You've already engaged in some, we'll just codify a list for you.
Yeah, I think if we make something consistent.
Bless you.
Kind of like our fire suppression incentives.
Yeah.
Maybe we can have some additional incentives.
Right. What is the long-term plan for Gus's property? Build a parking lot? Solicit for a private developer/business to build on part of it, question mark?
At one point, didn't we talk about a visitor's center there? A city...
That was thrown around.
I still like that idea.
Maybe on the wrong side of the street, but it was thrown around.
I still like the idea of a beautiful rest stop with a visitor's center, a couple of hosts, maybe with, along with the chamber. I don't know.
I think we are severely lacking in any kind of RV parking. There are so many trailers, motorhomes, you know, that drive through Canyon all year long, and there is no place beyond like big daddies that can accommodate a, a vehicle of that length to pull over. And I just can't help but wonder how much revenue we're missing out on because those people can't stop. And I think that, that would be a, a good place to have some RV parking.
So, the, sort of the toe in the water is to make it a parking lot would be acceptable for RVs.
Yes.
And then see what goes from there.
Because I've seen people try and pull over, like in the emergency lane on Highway 50, where, you know, on the other side of the guardrail of the frontage road, and try and hop the guardrail and run across the frontage road to stop at McDonald's or, you know. There's really no place to stop when you're pulling a trailer.
But if they park at First Street, McDonald's is an awful long walk.
I realize that, but at least it's a place that can accommodate a vehicle of that length with how many, I mean, all summer long, that's all you see driving through Canyon.
Right. I think the direction is, let's start with a parking lot.
And I think that's, uh, an important factor. The, the way that's going to make that successful is when we start getting our signs out.
Yes.
So, when the people come in, there'll be a sign saying, down the roadway, there's a place for pulling your RV on both ends, both east and west end. And, and I think it would be real good. And then also, I guess, if we're looking at it that way, why not look at what the cost would be? And maybe there won't be any cost to have some hookups for...
Electric?
The vehicles that are electrically powered, so they can plug it in, you know?
Oh, that'll create a homeless slew of issues, though.
No, I don't think, you don't mean RVs, you mean like cars?
Yeah, I know, but I mean, yes, electric cars, yeah.
For all the Teslas.
Yeah, there is actually a state grant.
Yeah, we just look at that too, along with it.
Yeah. Canyon City has been designated as one of the locations in the state for utilization of that VW money for charging stations. And clearly, that's the logical location.
Yeah.
So...
Along with a kiosk?
Yeah, there would be kiosks and vending machines there. It'd be like a little mini, quote, gas station.
Are we going to put big daddies out of business?
We, we were thinking of calling ourselves Little Daddy.
That ends getting bad.
Or Caitlin's got a question.
Who had a question? Oh, sorry, Ms. Turner.
I really liked Dolly's idea. I think we don't really have a welcoming center in our city. And for folks who are coming through who haven't been here before, I think it'd be really neat to have that place on the entrance to town where the people could go inside and talk to a volunteer who could tell them about Shelf Road and our mountain parks and the camping opportunities and the river opportunities. I mean, I think that's an, an opportunity for us to...
To really market our area.
Yeah, yeah. I like your idea.
Thank you.
And I do, too. I, I think that there is, there is a cabin there, but to get to that, you really can't have a tow-in trailer because you've got to go around Veterans Park.
That's a little hidden, too.
So...
Well, I have, I have a suggestion, but it might be, people may not like it, but Veterans Park could be a great parking lot for RV, for, but it's...
I don't think that's on our agenda, but I think...
I said it, sorry. I said it. I've been wanting to say it.
You're going to tear down our trees and grass?
No, we could park around the trees and...
Get wedged in between the trees.
Shaded parking, covered parking.
Narrow park that's right on the highway.
Slim RVs.
You know, and I think probably to take that further, a general discussion of the whole concept of that in there is the dynamics, the dynamics are going to change drastically with rezoning, with acquisition of properties. Maybe that does fit. I don't know, but I think you've got to look at all the pieces that we've got.
In the future, it makes no sense to have a very large park next to a smaller park when we are needing so much more parking for RVs, for...
Well, I think that's perfect for Black Hills, but that's beautiful for our Highway 50 and our image. But that's a discussion for another time.
Centennial, I think that's, the, the new mayor would probably want to discuss that one.
Yeah.
But I, I think in totality, what, we're, we're putting together some really important pieces for the long-term future. We need to be careful how we plan that.
I understand that, yeah.
It's because sometime we may get the Black Hills property, I mean, and i-if at all. And so, that's a part. Then we've got Gus's, then we've got other properties.
We can put the kiosk.
So, we could put Jim's kiosk there. We'll call it the Meisner Kiosk.
The Meisner Daddy.
Yes, okay.
So, so the, the suggestion is to look at the long-term plan, visitor's center, parking overall for that general area beyond Gus's.
And not, right, and not restrict, is all, everything's open for discussion. What are we going to do with that? And I, I think that we've always come up with some really good plans.
Mm-hmm.
Really. I'm, I'm proud of that, so...
That might be a good, Dolly, your question, I think should go in the citizen survey.
I would, I would be honored.
Okay. Should we support, that will be one, that will be one of the questions we're going to ask. Actually, here we go. Should we support a local marketing district election and commitment to match funds?
I think we've done that twice, Mayor.
Let's do it again.
This, this would be different. This would be a special district. It would not be a vote of the general population, only a vote of those people who lived in a very defined, physical district, largely US 50 corridor. And those property owners, 50% of them would have to agree to formulate the district, and then the people within the district would actually vote on increasing lodging tax.
And I think his office is protected from tar and feathering.
I'd say if the district wants to create their own little district and take control of all of that, I can support them in that, but I'm not going to support promising $300,000 of taxpayer money to match because the voters already said they don't want to do that. And, and I think we need that money for the stormwater fund.
I think it's just kind of a shady-backdoor way of getting what we want after we didn't like the voters' answers. And I'm not comfortable with it.
Well, the election itself isn't shady-backdoors. It's typical, that's, most communities do that all the time.
The election is not. Going in after it was voted down twice and doing it anyways with a special district, I think, is wrong.
You mean, you mean the three, matching the $300,000 piece?
Yes, if they want to do it, that's great, but the, the citizens have already told us twice that they do not want us, as a city, to put funds towards that. And it is what it is. Whether I agree with it or not, that's what they've told us.
Okay. Any further comments on that? There's none, all right. Let's go into questions. What questions item, items would you like to see on the 2019 citizen survey? I would like to just have a copy of that survey. You know, I can go get it and maybe have that in my hand and then go from there.
Sure.
Yeah, I think, yeah, it's been kind of a long list. Maybe we can save this for future. But we have a lot of good discussion items that we've had that I think we can add to that, to that list from even tonight.
I think the, the length needs to be cut back because I think a lot of people don't take the surveys, specifically the last one I took. And I probably spent close to 40 minutes taking it, and people just will not spend that kind of time taking a survey, so...
What was, what was the percentage of completion on that survey?
First, first year was 39, the second year 38, and last year 32.
So, I thought, yeah, so I think if you just focus on the questions we really want to know about.
Policy questions.
Instead of all that other stuff, national stuff.
So, can we get a copy of that?
Yeah.
And then let's, let's take it from there.
Put it on the agenda.
Either add to or you say, these ones I don't want anymore. Here's one that I want, and let's try and cut it down because I agree.
It was very lengthy. And it seems like it's gotten lengthier over the last...
And there's a lot of like the same question asked.
You've asked more policy questions.
Well, they have some standard questions they ask everybody.
Just ask policy questions. Don't ask the other service-related questions. We can do that like every second or third year. But policy questions help the council immensely in giving you such a direction, what the public will is.
Let's take a look at, let's take a look at that. Mr. Meyer?
Mayor, relative to the policy questions, could we, could we get a, a... Can we see a list of all the questions we've had on there for the last three years so that we know what we've been asking?
Yeah. And what the results were, too.
Yes.
Let's put it on the, a question on there with regards to the public. Do you feel that this survey is a beneficial one to you as a citizen? And see what they respond to, okay? Because now that's their answer with regards to the survey. Do they really feel it's beneficial to them?
Okay. We'll call that the frank question.
That is pretty frank.
Okay, enough. We're drawing to a close here. Can council communicate with our administrator and staff that they should follow direction and decisions made by council, rather than bring it back to council? Hmm, I wonder where that came from.
It's brown, okay?
It's a simple process. It's like Caitlin said, that I have absolutely no qualms with anybody on this council saying, hey, I'd like that issue brought back up. But when that issue and my belief comes from staff, I have a fundamental problem with that. And we can argue about this all day long, but I believe that issue on the signs came from staff because it was not a unanimous decision, no council. So, therefore, they felt that council didn't really make the right decision and that they knew better and that they should try again.
And actually, it wasn't just on the sign issue. There's been other instances, too, where I feel like that's happened as well.
So...
Well, that's just, that's a, that's a caution thing, so I, I... Okay.
We'll put that in as expectations for next year.
So, can I ask a question? Was this good? Like, did you guys like having this? Do you want to do it quarterly?
I think it was nice for us to all be on the same page of what's important to us moving forward.
Well, they're like pre-government and pre-vision concepts that we all say, and hey, it makes sense. It's kind of like the retreat thing, but it's, gives it a little more definition, I guess.
We'll have a quarterly opportunity because sometimes things arise that don't happen at our annual retreat. So, so Tony, I think we'll, we'll go ahead and move forward with the quarterly and we'll keep compiling questions for the next quarters for us to consider together as a unit.
So, we'll have a, are you saying that we should go ahead and put a suggestion box in front of the administrator's office? Isn't that what they used to do?
I think it's the administrators giving suggestions to us to, instead of taking it one-on-one, it takes it to all of us.
And all staff. It's a two-way street. They know a lot. They're good staff.
It'll be a brown box that you'll be able to identify.
Oh, Tony, all right.
Good, good question.
Yes, sir.
This document review, what are we supposed to do with that?
Oh, the thing at the end?
Yeah, that's what I was wondering, too.
The one for, I just need the, your signature on your page so I can turn it in.
Assuming I read it.
Pop quiz.
When do you need it? When do you need it?
This?
Tomorrow by 11:00.
Can I ask any questions or is that out of line?
Talking about this?
Yeah.
It's in the very back.
Yeah.
Questions? Do our best to answer them.
When does it need to be signed by?
Next council meeting.
Not tomorrow?
I don't think so. I think it's the next council meeting. I don't know, the mayor doesn't get one, so...
Have you, have you decided on an order of the released properties, or when will that be made?
We, we discussed that today. And the order that Harry is recommending is that the, the properties that have the least value get released first.
Makes sense.
So, I think it, I can't remember the exact order, I apologize. The numbers, the, the values are in there in that section.
There's a question in there about whether the franchise fee would be used for the base rentals and that there was some discussion that needed to happen?
Yeah, no, it's not going to be used for the base rentals.
There's a couple of paragraphs that make reference to the fact that the lease,
There's a couple of paragraphs that make reference to the fact that the lease, the verbiage in the lease mandates that Tony puts funding in the budget. That seems to be not legal for a lease to mandate what he does with the budget that he sends to us, which is contingent upon our approval.
Okay, I'll take a closer look at it.
It basically says he has to put that money in the budget that he submits to council.
Okay. That's probably okay legally to mandate that he at least attempt to appropriate the funds. That's pretty common for local governments to have that in long-term agreements like this, so it's probably okay, but I'll take a look at it.
It's two places, page-
Two places, okay.
Page four and page eight.
Okay.
I just had a quick question, I put it, should have put it on the 15 here. We get franchise fees paid to us from the cable company.
Yes.
Can we divulge what that amount is roughly? I don't know what-
Yeah, it's about a hundred and a quarter in that neighborhood. Yeah. And that's restricted, that's why we spent the money on your upgrade stuff, that's restricted to audiovisual related purchases.
Is it wider than that? Can it be, could it be for a, well, Thursday night, we had the big get-together, that was a terrible sound system. Is that something the city could own and loan out?
If we could look into, that's kind of a stretch. For example, we use some of the funding to provide video equipment to the high school, that was valid.
Which is an approved course now, and they're going to get certificates for that.
Because they're producing programming, intent is to generate programming, public educational government programming. That's the true intent of what the franchise fee money is supposed to be.
Is that written down or is it just that simple?
Yeah, there's a franchise agreement. We can double-check it and see if we can-
Your franchise is coming up.
So, we could make, we could expand the franchise and Mr. Hammrich would be, and Ms. Turner would be more-
We'll research that for you.
On page 10, there's a paragraph that explains that the city's income tax or the city's tax revenue is controlled by all these various factors. And I realize that this is a description document, but that paragraph seems like it's rambling with no meaning to the rest of the document.
Like at the bottom, that starts on the bottom of page 10?
No, it's, it's the second paragraph on page 10, you don't have to do it now, but it just basically is a forewarning that taxing, or tax revenue is caused, has all sorts of fluctuations and this and that and, but it's-
So, that's, you know why that's required, right, to be put in here? To put investors on notice that, you know, things could go awry. And there's all these factors that change sales tax revenue.
They've done that in much less verbiage than other places in the document.
I will let them know, okay?
We are unique in being very reliant upon the sales tax, which is the most volatile revenue source.
But I will ask them to see if they can reduce that, is that, just a few less words?
About a hundred.
A hundred less words, okay.
Okay, I'm sorry, we were-
Yeah, a little whispering there.
No.
Is, is, are all the council members okay with what their listed occupation is? Did you look at that section? No?
I just wanted to check Caitlin's, it infers that you're a prisoner that's an attorney in the federal prison.
I would not approve, I have not signed my form yet.
That you're a jailhouse attorney.
Yeah, I am not a jailhouse attorney.
Because if you have, if you have changes, we need them by tomorrow morning, no late.
Dolly, you're in the coffee industry, not the food industry, coffee industry.
That's page number 25.
I'm not sure.
So, Caitlin, you could get a movie deal out of this.
Okay, we're seeing to be drifting, I'm going to go ahead and adjourn, the administrator has a report.
The only report is we're adding an action item to your agenda on Wednesday relative to the purchase and sale of the Shaver property.
Okay.
Should take a few minutes.
All right, then, we adjourned.